Easier in the meat.
Oh, no, I'm arguing that.
He thought it was, but it's not. He found that out quickly. So then I took over.
Is that in the know?
So I just gotta.
The budget we talked about.
So I was like, oh, so.
Yep.
So that's where I'll be. I'll be taking off Friday and then I'll go down.
Okay.
And see mom for the meats.
We don't know the answer.
TCU's there, isn't it? No, maybe they're not.
What's that?
We still have no.
TCU F L.
No, we didn't make it.
Benefits?
We didn't make it. That was the meat that we had at George. That was the TruTeam crawl. I think Del King Girls made it.
Okay.
And I'm not sure who the boys were.
Okay.
That's what that is. Greatest, greatest meetup.
It is.
If we could ever make that.
TruTeam? Yeah. Oh, it's so fun.
Have you been to it? It's a blast.
Yep.
The amount of cheering, the amount of kids just getting involved, picking up stuff, doing.
Yep, it's fun.
Everything you can to get that extra point for your kid is like well shown.
Yep. All right, all, it's six o'clock. I'm gonna call the meeting to order at six P M. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call shows that all are present. Uh, we'll start with the administrative reports with marketing.
That is fast.
How long did you think it was that day?
Sorry. I was waiting till the very end. Okay, so I did a PowerPoint. Sorry, let me back up. Good evening, everybody. Hope everyone's good and this lovely day. Put together a quick PowerPoint slide with the key initiatives that have been keeping me busy over the last couple of months. So I don't know who's in charge of flipping the slides, but.
It'd be me.
You flip fast and I can talk fast.
Okay.
So April highlights. As you can see, we had the first ever Montgomery State of the Community Meeting, which Kevin and I showed up at. Interesting event. Hopefully in the future it'll grow. Like I said, it was the first ever. So we had Awareness Week, severe weather, Admin Professional Week, N H S Induction Week, which was, or Evening, which was really full, was huge, huge turnout in the pack. Spring Play and Student Art Show. So keep flipping.
Yep.
May, to date, obviously. Nurses Appreciation, Another Montgomery Chamber, Prom, Battle of the Books at the Middle School, and Baby Animal Day. I did see a picture of Kevin holding a duck, I believe, which I did not include, I'm sorry.
I didn't think I was gonna hold the duck. I have the duck.
That's a great event, so if anybody ever gets a chance, definitely entertaining. So the rest of the month, starting tomorrow, it gets a little busier. We have mock interviews here at the high school tomorrow morning, then tomorrow evening, the Lonsdale Street Fair. So if anybody wants to get out of the house and hang out, from five to seven thirty, I'll be over in Lonsdale with Tony and Alan. And then we have the La Center's kickoff to summer. The twenty-third, the twenty-ninth, I'll be taking photos of the Lonsdale Student Council as they deliver blankets that they made as a, like a service project kind of, to the villages of Lonsdale. And I completely skipped graduation because, you know, it's kind of a big deal, obviously. So, and then graduation, obviously, on the thirty-first. Then the rest of the summer, hopefully we'll be a little quieter and we can get some other big initiatives done. But we've got Clash Key Days where anybody wants to join, we'll be walking with the band. August fifteenth through the eighteenth is the La Sure County Fair, where we will have a booth and be there the entire time. And then the fifteenth, we also actually are going to be participating in the La Sure County Back to School Resource Fair with the county puts on, and we'll be hosting you at the La Center, at the middle school there. So that keeps us busy. Digitally, actually, we've been doing really well with our growth. So the website has had about forty-six hundred people visit just in the last month. And with Facebook over, over the last year, I should say, since I started, we've grown over a thousand followers on the Facebook, which is pretty good, so we're about growing a little over one percent a month. Instagram is slowly growing. Twitter kind of teeters back and forth, so sometimes it'll go up and then it'll drop that many the next month. So I don't really sweat Twitter a whole lot. Right now, we're actually also running a digital campaign for enrollment. We're looking to capture or recapture students or families that have open enrolled out and hoping to bring them back to the district. And you can see three different, four different ads up there, and they rotate automatically within Facebook and Instagram. And so far, we've had about twenty thousand views on it that actually people see. And that was only within the first ten days. And then we had a hundred and three interactions with it. So people click on the ad, will go to the website or to the Facebook, wherever that specific ad draws it to. And so with that, I should say, in conjunction with that, we have a postcard campaign that we're doing. I'm out of order, but the postcard, we're going to mail directly to all of our open enrolled families out. And they will, it matches our digital campaign. So when we have new families come into the district, we have a service that we, we use called Welcome Neighbor Services. And so they will go, the service goes to the new family's home and gives them information on TCU or different businesses in Montgomery or New Prague or businesses that pay the service to participate. And so we get their addresses and then we will end up sending them a specific postcard every so often, trying to engage them and say, like us better, kind of thing. In the meantime, we will be doing a year-round digital campaign that changes based on the month it is. Like right now, we're focusing on enrollment. September, October, November, when school starts again, we'll focus more on school spirit and hey, we are back to school. What's going on? December, January, February, March, kindergarten roundup. And April, what have we done? It's our month to brag, basically. And then we have our building mockups. So Kevin and I have been working on doing some branding with the different buildings. This is not a hundred percent final yet because I'm still waiting on finalizing a couple of questions with the estimates before we present them to P T Os to say, hey, help us pay for this. But you can see in the pictures, this is a couple of the looks that we're looking for or planning on having. They'll be the same, but different. And we have just, this is just La Center and Montgomery right now, because I'm waiting for the mockups of the high school and Lonsdale. So hopefully this summer, we'll get that done. Another new initiatives that I've been working with ID Threads over in New Prague. A couple of our sports teams already do, but they are going to have a store within their store of TCU administration, so not sport focused, but more just straight branded. And the Global Print Company is another one that I'm working with. Well, they will house, you can actually click on that one link. They're gonna have a portal that houses all TCU products. So if you scroll, you can see all these different items that have our branding on them. So these are items that I might have purchased swag-wise over the past year or I might want to purchase in the future. The logos are not specific, a hundred percent accurate, but it just gives you an idea. So they'll are actually a better price, much more cost-effective than a lot of the companies that we currently use. And they are specific to us. And then in the future, maybe I could partner with the school store and house clothing lines that families can purchase directly through here and have it like a direct ship. So you can buy it on Sunday afternoon if you're sitting from home versus waiting till the store is open sometime. So, and this is all still in process. And like I said, it's a, it's a really good system, like just a matter of getting it. So right now, it is only available to me. And so, once, once it gets a little farther forward and there's discussions, maybe then the school will be part of it. But it will be, eventually be open to different administratives within the district. So if the district office needs to buy, you know, business cards for somebody and they don't contact me, they go on there, you can actually type in all the information that they specifically need for Kevin's business card, and it will stay on brand, on point, and the only thing that a person can change is his name. So. And I think then upcoming, we basically have community ed, reworking their website this summer, that's a big plan. I'm actually met with them, we're doing a digital marketing campaign for community ed, which will run kind of parallel with what the district is doing as a whole, but more community ed focused. Continue working on the branding, the website and social media and, you know, prepare for the rest of the summer fun. And that's it. Any questions? I think I went fast enough.
That engagement for the ads is pretty neat to see. I know it reaches twenty thousand, but then the engagement clicks are always less with marketing. But that number's still pretty good.
Yeah.
Something to see.
Considering it was only ten days, I was really surprised.
Yep.
So we, we, like I said, it's grown, social media has grown, Facebook has a thousand, a thousand more followers and likes than it has been this time last year. So I'm finally getting to the point where I can start having the year-over-year version, you know, a baseline of it, which is nice, so.
That's great.
Okay. Excellent, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah.
Next, we got food service.
Well, good evening, happy Monday. All right, so tonight, I just thought I'd give you some program updates. I just wanted to show you some trending numbers from the month of April, for example, from last year to this year, even though there's a two-day difference. We have noticed some larger numbers for breakfast and three out of our four sites, our Lonsdale site has actually kind of dipped in numbers for breakfast, but our other three buildings have increased anywhere from twenty to fifty extra meals every day. So that's why you're noticing a difference on that, and that comes along with lunch also. We have two buildings that have been trending higher meal counts for lunch, which is both the Montgomery Buildings, the middle school, elementary and the high school. So that's also showing here in our lunch counts difference of almost five thousand within the two-day difference. So those are good things, those are things that we planned for with the free meal program that was happening. I know coming up year, it sounds like our enrollment will be done a little bit, but we still expect to, you know, offer the students enough variety that they're gonna come and continue to eat because even though it's free, it's a choice, they don't have to come and eat our food. They could bring home food from home, but it's nice to have them come and see us in the kitchen. So the month of May, we did our, what were they called? Well, we did our, trying to think what it was. Well, we're doing some favorites for the kids that we found out that they really enjoyed. We're bringing the brunch for lunch back. That's pretty much our biggest brunch that we do for lunch for the kids. It's a French toast, cinnamon glaze, a little bit of sugar on it, and then we get two sausage patties. And they love it, it's a huge meal for them. And then we add some other goodies to it. So we're bringing that back on the menu, and then we're doing some different varieties of homemade pizza. I think on Facebook, we had the Chicken Bacon Ranch that was on there, and our high school staff put some fresh sliced jalapenos on it this time, and we've been doing the Chicken Bacon Ranch at our other schools. So just something different for the kids. And then they voted on the popcorn chicken bowls, we brought that back the last week of school because we thought, well, I know there's stuff that we have to use up in our freezers, but it's always nice to kind of give them like their favorite things the last week of school and kind of give them some good vibes. And then we brought the Pizza Munchable back for our elementary school, that was something that the kids voted on. It's basically flatbread with mozzarella cheese, you know, pizza sauce and pepperoni, but, you know, they enjoyed it. So we did it on Baby Animal Day and got some good feedback again. So those are just some things that we brought back for the month of May for our students to enjoy. Tonight, we're gonna have Chef John here. He's gonna be at the high school this week, Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. He's doing kind of a tasting tour of Japan. So tonight, we'll be trying out the street food that he will be serving with the rest of our staff to all of our high school students on Wednesday. It's a Japanese fried chicken rice bowl. So they're back there right now frying the chicken and making the rice and setting up our, our meal for, after the board meetings for everybody to try, so it'll be kind of exciting for you guys to give that a try and meet John. And then tomorrow, he will be in Foods Class Two, both first and second hour. And they're gonna do more of a culinary culture of street food, so they're gonna be doing pan-fried dumplings tomorrow in class, so, for that session, so that'll be a lot of fun. And then again, on Wednesday, we'll serve this meal that we're having tonight to all students. They'll get that option, or we'll do a deli turkey sub on Wednesday. And then we've got some fresh watermelon, some fresh cantaloupe, fresh honeydew, some strawberries, because that would be something that the students in Japan would be having with this meal, a lot of fresh melon at this time of the year. So we brought that in, and I know we'll have Ms. Ann on site to get some pictures out to everybody, so you can see that on Facebook Live, so that'll be kind of nice. Site replacements, we do have a few big things that we are needing to replace and have put in orders in for. The TCU High School, we have the hot serving line. Right now, it's got three hot wells, of which two are working properly. It is a piece of equipment that was here before the merge, and it has seen its life expectancy. So we did order two new units, it'll have five heated wells, which is nice because we're offering a lot more food to our high school students. So it's gonna be actually less space, but more things to offer for hot wells. So that has been something that's been made. We put an order in in January and it's completed, so we're just waiting on shipment. So that'll be coming out probably next week, and then we'll have to have an electrician come. So probably closer to last week of school, all of our high school students will see our new serving line for the last five days of school and then, you know, for the start of next year. So we're pretty excited about that because, I don't know, we've got a really good crew at our high school, just as we have in the past, and it's just nice to be able to offer some things and have the space to offer it. So we're pretty excited about that one. And then we do have a larger project, Inlee Center, the walk-in cooler and freezer is gonna be replaced. We've had some failure with the condensers and the evaporators. And just the age of the unit, I believe it was built, put in in nineteen ninety-eight. So, and currently, the specs on that is about sixty percent freezer and forty percent cooler. So we are gonna change that a little bit and make the cooler a little bit larger, which is nice. So that'll be a little bit more of a bigger project that will be done in the month of June, which again, as we move down and talk about summer meals, that will affect our summer meal program. Inlee Center for the month of June, we will not have one there, but we will have it up and running by the time summer school starts after the Fourth of July week. So that'll be nice for us to have a new unit there, it'll be very efficient. And just be nice to have a little more space for all of the fresh vegetables and fruit that we bring in, all the milk that we have on site, so. And as soon as we get that done, obviously, we'll share out some photos and have you guys out to take a look. And I just kind of gave an update to how much fresh fruit and veggies that we had come from our D O D truck this last month, and it was three thousand seven hundred and fifty-four pounds, which again, doesn't include the other fresh fruit that we get in twice a week through our company out of La Crosse. So we're moving through the fruit and veggies, the kids are eating it, we've got a lot of salad going out. I know the high school, you guys see that salad going out, so we're just kind of giving them some different things. So looking forward to finishing out the year and coming up with some new stuff for next year. And then summer meals, so we're gonna start right after school is out, June third on Monday. And then we're gonna end that Friday after summer school is out, which is August second. So we do have some closing times, it'll be June nineteenth, which is our holiday. And then July first to the fifth, pretty much the whole week of Fourth of July, we're closing because we just don't have enough kids that come in at that time, we have a lot of people out of town. But, you know, we'll kind of see how that goes. And we are gonna extend breakfast fifteen minutes longer, so that'll be from eight to nine-thirty. I kind of looked what community ed was programmed and just noticed that maybe we can keep it open a little longer, maybe get some more kids in for breakfast. And then lunch, we're gonna start a little earlier, so we're gonna go from eleven to twelve-fifteen for lunch. And that should hit most of our kids that are in swim class and some of the other community ed classes and just those that are in, kind of in the general area when they get out of bed and maybe are going to the playground, they can come in for lunch. So again, Montgomery will be open June third, and then Lee Center would be open July eighth through August twelfth. So we'll kind of keep you updated on the web if something changes, but that's, that's our plan moving forward. Do you guys have any questions on anything? Awesome. Well, we'll see you after, after the meeting for seeing how many food.
Thanks.
Thanks, Amy.
Okay, next, I'll seek a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Trevor Hohn, seconded by Marcia Fronak, to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's passed, seven-zero. Next, we move on to the consent agenda. Let me get to the right screen here. We have approval of minutes from our April eighth, twenty-twenty-four board meeting. Under Personnel, we have employment ending. Andrea Krebs, speech language pathologist. Kristen Glockner, color guard advisor. Brooke Sonny, speech language pathologist. Emily Dahl, elementary teacher. Jonathan DePauw, fifth through eighth grade sped teacher. Amy Alberg, N H S advisor. Kristy Wrestler, Kid Zone. Carrie Hartwig, part-time administrative assistant. Emily Irwin, high school student council and graduation advisor. David Schultz, technology assistant. Under new hires, we have Elizabeth Evenson, fifth through eighth sped teacher. Sydney Limiteras, summer school paraprofessional. Jesse Johnson, elementary teacher. Bethany Olson, elementary teacher. Jen Davidson, high school student council advisor. Alicia Valiant, fifth through eighth sped teacher. Amanda Pook, paraprofessional. Under leave of absence, we have Allison Krasinski from the high school. And then we have approval of bills in the amount of eight hundred seventy-five thousand, six hundred fifty-six dollars and fifty-four cents, as well as the finance report. Seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
All right, I have a motion by Kevin Huber, seconded by Chris Vlasic, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's passed, seven-zero.
Before you, before you go on.
Yep.
I just wanna highlight one of our employment ending, because he's in here right now, sorry, Dave. But I would like to just personally, after I've known Dave for two years, the work that he has done for this district. He will be a difficult loss for this district for what he's done for us here. And I didn't want to go without saying that, being that he was here, that he's gonna be missed. And the work that you do is gonna be hard to replace. So I just wanted to share that before we move on.
I appreciate it. Thanks, Dave. All right, do you have anybody for open forum? All right. Next, Students' School Board Report.
So we set out podcasts in jars in all of our classrooms at the high school to see what we can collect. And it's coming to an end this Wednesday. So we're gonna weigh the advisory outcomes to see one, and then they're gonna be brought to the Rod McDonald House in Minneapolis.
We did something with that last year and it went pretty well, so we're kind of hoping to see the same results this year. Last week was, not last week, the week before, was Safety Week? Yep, two weeks ago, was Safety Week, and that's one of the biggest events that student council puts on. And we had a really good turnout of engagement with other students. People wanted to be involved, they wanted to participate, which was really great because the whole point of Safety Week is to bring awareness to all of the things, all of the things. We had seatbelt checks, trivia, that was a big, a big hit, was the Family Feud trivia that we did during checking time. But I think it went really well. I've been on student council for three years and it was one of the best results that we've had with Safety Week.
And then as a school, we just sent, I think it was twenty sophomores and juniors to our Yea Summit, or Yay Summit. It was at South Central, and it's just like where I went as one of them, and we just go, we talked to, I think it's four other schools, WEM, TCU, Fairville and Northfield. And we talk about just problems in our school, we look at data from each school. I think we, most of them that we looked at this year were, like, we saw some bullying stats, some mental health stats. It was kind of, this year was more all, all around, but we're coming back. I think we have a tightened time this week set up for us to come back and talk about what we can do at our school. We get ideas from other schools of what they do to help, and so we come back and we bring those to ours.
Thank you.
Nice job, ladies.
Yeah. Oh, I've, how many went to that?
I think it was twenty.
Twenty?
I think we, each school can send twenty, and I'm pretty sure, I heard them say we sent all twenty.
Wait, and are they nominated, or are they, how was that?
Typically, like, this was the first year I think that they did it, but they reached out to the whole school and for sophomores and juniors, and we had, you had to fill out a form of why you think you could be in it and why, like, you want to help with the school. And I'm pretty sure that every person that reached out was accepted into it.
Great.
I think in the past, you had to get nominated, right?
Yeah, typically, like.
In the past, it was a nomination by different staff.
Mr. Fitter, I think, normally would just pick them, but this year, they had people just reach out to get more interest. And they only got twenty, but that's all you need, I guess.
Yeah. Great.
Do you want to share what that exactly is with some people that might not know what the conference is?
Um, yeah, it's just like, they do, they do two a year. And typically, they only have sophomores and juniors go, but we, we've brought some seniors sometimes. I've been in it, I think that was my third summit. And it's a new topic each year, so, or each summit, but last one was fully on just mental health, and that one was a very deep summit, but this one was a little bit, a little bit lighter for us to do. But it was honestly harder to do this one just because it was, like, we didn't have as much information from our school. It's led by a new school, like, each, each school does two. So we, our first one that we'll do is, or like, that will lead, I think, is spring of twenty-twenty-five. And then we'll do the fall of twenty-twenty-six, and we'll lead that, so. And I don't know what our topic will be yet, but.
Does it rotate to the different schools?
Um, yeah, you can pick, this year, WEM led it for this summit, and then they'll lead it in the fall too, but they went to South Central and Fairville, which they don't have to. I know Mr. Fitter had talked about when we do it, we could do it maybe somewhere in town. Otherwise, Ms. Irwin said we could also probably just go back to South Central. It's a nice, like, they have a good room for us to do it in, so we'll see what they end up choosing, but yeah, it's, it's pretty cool, actually. And we get to come back and then the rest of the year, we'll, we'll focus on, or not just this year, but next year when we come back, like, what we can do to help fix those problems that we see in our statistics.
Cool.
Great, thank you. All right. Next, under informational items, we have an enrollment update.
Down just a few students, nothing has really changed. Family left, and then just a few senior shifts have shifted out. Otherwise, no significant changes to the enrollment patterns at all. Stayed pretty stable for the last month.
Good. All right, committee updates, we have finance. Chris or Marcia, are you able to speak to finance committee?
Yeah, Chris can't talk a lot tonight, so I'll, I'll do the updates. We talked about our budget, where we are, and the budget where we're gonna be for twenty-twenty-five. There's some difference in enrollments, you know, as we knew that was gonna be happening. There is a deficit that will be for the end of twenty-four that is projected. We talked about our staffing and different class sizes. Budget reviews, again, are next steps as we go through and do that, which we'll see here. Probably June, we'll be, we'll adopt the new budget. We'll talk about some health benefits as far as our consultant. And then we also talked about the primary building, which we met in that night. And that was about it. Oh, the, the death beneficiary, which is already in your board packet, there is two more issue, or not issues, but donations with that. And then our property sales update too, and parking lots, we talked about. That was about it.
Great, thanks. All right. Under new business, Chris, you want to take it away?
Being resolved that the school board of Independent School District Number Two-Ninety-O-Five accepts with appreciation the following donations and permits their use as designated by the donors. Anonymous donor, Structural Steel for Shop Program, valued at five thousand dollars. Lee Center American Legion for Community Ed, Lee Center Outdoor Active Play Area, valued at five hundred dollars.
All right, I'll need a second.
I'll make that motion. We're seconding it.
All right. Board Member Chris Vlasic presented a resolution which was seconded by Marcia Fronak. This will be a roll call vote. Marcia?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Josh is a yes. Kevin Huber?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
And Cindy?
Yes.
All right. Has passed, seven-zero. Next, I'll need a motion to approve Kevin Babcock to act as identified. to act as identified official with authority for Tri-City United Schools. This is a routine.
This is routine, and Brett and I were talking today. We will come up with an established date when that'll start, so tonight's just the approval. We'll probably, or I'll probably approve that then in July at some point. It's just FYI.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion by Trevor Hohn, seconded by Hillary Birdzel, to approve Kevin Babcock to act as the identified official with authority for Tri-City United Schools, number 2905, for the '24-'25 school year. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion's passed 7-0. All right, next resolution, Chris.
Be it resolved that the school board of independent school district number 2905, pursuant to Minnesota statutes 122A.40 subdivision 5, that the teaching contract of Samantha Kyle, a probationary teacher in the independent school district number 2905, is hereby reduced by 1 FTV at the close of the current 2023-24 school year.
I'll need a second.
Second.
All right, I have a resolution introduced by Chris Bleszak, which was seconded by Kevin Huber. This will be a roll call vote. Marcia?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
I am a yes. Kevin Huber? Hillary?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
And Cindy? Resolution is passed 7-0. Chris, you again.
Be it resolved the school board of directors of Tri-City United School District hereby authorizes Gene Cobb, director of business services, to act on behalf of the organization in all matters related to the acceptance and receipt of the death benefit payable under the life insurance policy of Archie C. Deliden, including signing any necessary documents, forms, or agreements under policy numbers A21220, A21857, A2252, A23574, and A32595.
All right, I'll need a second.
I'll second it.
All right, I have a resolution introduced by Chris Bleszak, seconded by Trevor Hohn. This will be a roll call vote. Marcia?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
I am a yes. Kevin?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
And Cindy? Resolution's passed 7-0.
Be it resolved that the board of directors of Tri-City United School District hereby authorizes Gene Cobb, director of business services, to act on behalf of the organization in all matters related to the acceptance and receipt of the death benefit payable under the life insurance policy of Archie C. Deliden, including signing any necessary documents, forms, or agreements under policy number 860888648.
All right, I'll need a second.
Is that Kevin?
All right, resolution introduced by Chris Bleszak, seconded by Kevin Huber. This will be a roll call vote. Marcia?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
I am a yes. Kevin?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
And Cindy? Resolution's passed 7-0. Okay, next, I'll seek a motion to approve the Prairie Care Fund Grant for Mental Health in the amount of $10,000.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Is that for the full school? Like, the, like, is it K-12, or is it specific?
Yeah, it's K-12.
Okay.
Sorry, Marcia, did you second it?
I, I made the motion, Chris seconded.
Sorry, I got you two. I have, must have to second you. All right, I have a motion by Marcia Fronak, seconded by Chris Bleszak, to approve the Prairie Care Fund Grant for Mental Health in the amount of $10,000. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion's passed 7-0. All right, next is a motion, I'll seek a motion, excuse me, to approve Tri-City United's 24, 2024-2025 membership in the Minnesota State High School League.
I'll make a motion.
Second it.
All right, I have a motion proposed by Hillary Birdzel, seconded by Marcia Fronak, to approve the Tri-City United's membership in the Minnesota State High School League for 2024-2025. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion's passed 7-0.
I'll make a motion.
You don't even know what to talk about.
Exactly, you got to wait.
Give us your paycheck, that's what you want.
I'd like to seek a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Trevor.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion by Trevor Hohn, seconded by Chris Bleszak, to adjourn the meeting at 6:34 PM. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed?
This other sheet, you should probably write, I will not interrupt Josh again.
Chef John.
That's my sign, oh.
Let's have Chef John say a couple words real quick.
Yeah.
Yep. Chef John?
All right, everybody, come on up.
Let's have Chef John say a couple things first, real quick.
First of all, I'll start with, there's enough food for everyone. John Sugamara, Chef, Chef Council member for Tahoe, your food management company, doing Japanese food, that's what I exclusively do for Tahoe. Tonight, we're doing the exact same meal. Students will be, I can't believe you like, right now. No, no, you don't. We're doing the exact same menu that the kids, the students will be enjoying on Wednesday for in classes tomorrow. We have fax classes, food and culinary science classes. We have life skills chef table on Thursday, and then a district shift table for anybody and everybody that wants to join and get in through the line a few minutes early. The menu tonight is karage-dan, which is Japanese fried chicken, the most popular thing in all of Japan for people to enjoy. But the reason why we're serving it here is because it is gluten-free. It is not cooked with a batter, it's cooked with potato starch, so it has 70% less saturated fats. You're getting a fresh protein that the staff prepared versus something frozen or processed or commodity-like. You'll be enjoying traditional seasoned rice. They made tsunamono, which is pickles on a stick, which you would eat and you would enjoy in the supermarket in Kyoto, Japan. And they did, everything was executed just this morning, so you guys can enjoy it tonight, and we'll further do the mass production between now and Wednesday. There's dumplings in there that we'll be doing in the classes, pork dumplings, that's my grandmother's recipe. Me, you know, mentioning my grandmother, so for context of why I do the food, you would think I do the food because I'm a foodie, which I am, but I'm also a third-generation Japanese-American and a second-generation chef. So I'm a direct descendant of Tulley Lake, which was the second camp of 10 camps that was built during World War II when our president declared that Japanese-Americans could not pledge their allegiance to the United States, and Japanese-Americans were put in camp. So Grandma, who had a restaurant, who was a single-parent immigrant, non-English speaking, with six kids in the 20s, my grandfather passed away quickly from cancer after all the children born, opened up a restaurant in Sacramento. To this day, the only female-owned, female-chef, successful restaurant that took care of the family all the way up to World War II because Grandma would close the restaurant on a Wednesday. My aunts and uncles and dad would help Grandma close, eat dinner, go home. They would, they were ordered into Tulley Lake Thursday morning. Tulley Lake being the second camp means you were in there excessively long, so they were locked up for four and a half years to lose everything. So I work with the Smithsonian, so I'm probably the only known chef that's telling the Japanese-American heritage story through food. So the recipes you're eating today either are exactly my grandmother's, or I spent years figuring it out, because you can imagine Grandma did not bring her cookbook into the camp. But true story, and the one thing that you'll learn if your family is fractured by war, you kind of feel like a fraud because you have 50% of the information,